Thank you. Good evening and welcome to tonight's episode of this March 23rd, 2021 Virtual Administrative Meeting of the Bernalillo County Commissioners. I call this meeting to order. We will have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jennifer Gallegos. Jennifer, when you're ready, unmute yourself.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And so now moving on, Madam County Manager, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, tonight there will be no changes nor additions. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Onto Proclamations. Acknowledgement of Representative Edward Sandoval. Presentation of acknowledgement by Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to have an official acknowledgement for Edward Sandoval so that we could have something to give to his family afterwards. And I believe his daughter is with us, Christina Sandoval, and she might want to say a few words afterwards. So acknowledging, this is an acknowledgement, the Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners does hereby acknowledge Representative Edward C. Sandoval, acknowledging that New Mexico Representative Edward C. Sandoval, who passed away this March 3rd, served 30 years in New Mexico, has represented with distinction as the elected representative for the North Valley residents of Bernalillo County, acknowledging that Representative Sandoval was a family man, his greatest love was his wife, Loretta's daughter Christina, his three grandsons, and that his love for his family carried through in his representation of his constituents, acknowledging that he was a lifelong Bernalillo County resident, graduating from Bailey High School, University of New Mexico, had a passion for cultural traditions of New Mexico, in particular music, and that he entertained people from all over the world on his radio show on Saturday mornings at KNW 89.1, acknowledging that he was a lifelong parish member of the Guaylupet Church, and as a boy served as an altar boy and later as readers for services, acknowledging that Representative Sandoval was instrumental in the passage of critical legislation to benefit the people of New Mexico, including the creation of the Rio Grande Valley State Park, the promotion of mental health solutions such as Mental Health Perdiac, and jail diversion programs, and the stewardship of New Mexico's tax and budget policies, and acknowledging that Representative Sandoval was also instrumental in securing almost 2 million for the North Valley Little League Complex in unincorporated Bernalillo County that carries his name, allowing the league to finally move to a permanent location. Now therefore be it resolved that Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners recognizes and remembers the lifelong service of Representative Edward C. Sandoval to the people of Bernalillo County, the state of New Mexico, on this 23rd day of March 2021, in Bernalillo County, state of New Mexico. And Madam Chair, as I mentioned, that Christina Sandoval is, I think, with us, and if she could say a few words. Thank you.
Absolutely. Christina, if you'd like, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. I'm here with my mom, Loretta Sandoval, and we would both just like to thank Commissioner O'Malley and the Bernalillo County Commission for this proclamation. You know, as Debbie said, my dad made a lot of contributions to the state of New Mexico, but specifically the North Valley, and he would be very honored to know that, you know, his acts of service have been recognized by your body. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Christina. Thank you, Loretta. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. Does anybody else have any comments that they'd like to make at this time? Okay. Oh, County Manager Julie, go ahead.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I just wanted to just say a couple of words. So I've known Representative Sandoval for many, many years, and when I was at the court, very, you know, in my early twenties or late to mid twenties, I was lobbying and learning the ropes, and he always was so kind and kind of took me under his wings since like the late eighties until now, and I learned a lot from him, always very respectful, always very helpful, and such a kind man and wonderful public servant. So anyway, Christina and Loretta, our deepest condolences, and we lost a very, very good man, but he's always in our hearts and we appreciate everything that he did for us.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And moving on, next we have an acknowledgement of accounting and budget. So Shirley Reagan or Madam County Manager, would you like to present now? Shirley.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Shirley Reagan, Deputy County Manager for Finance. I think we've stood before you many a times with these, but it takes a lot of work and a lot of effort that goes into this award. And so at this time, I'd like to read an acknowledgement to the Accounting and Budget Department's Budget Office, and I also have our manager, our Budget Manager Jennifer Gallegos on to have a few words and acknowledge her staff. Budgeting is a very important process of the government system, allowing Bernalillo County to provide goods and services in a financially practical manner and limiting the debt and cutbacks required of unorganized spending. Starting in 1984, the Government Finance Officers Association, known as GFOA, has operated the Budget Award Program to encourage and assist government agencies to prepare excellent budget documents in line with recognized best practices. The Association judges the excellence of the agency budget presentation based on the clarity of revenues and expenditures, detail of county debt and capital, and objective measures of operational success. For their outstanding work in preparing the biennial budget, the Accounting and Budget Department's Budget Office was bestowed the Association's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, the highest honor in governmental budgeting, for its biennial budget for the biennium beginning July 1, 2020, which includes fiscal years 2021 and 2022. The office also received special, received the Special Performance Measures Recognition for its budget, recognizing the use of best practices in financial assessment, including objective measures and data-driven decision-making. This is the 21st consecutive time and 22nd time overall that Bernalillo County has received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, the second time in a row for the county receiving the Special Performance Measures Recognition. The Bernalillo County Board of Commissioners, myself, the county manager, would like to congratulate the Budget and Accounting Budget Office staff and thank them for their continued dedication and pursuit of budgeting to measure and communicate the financial wealth of the company, of the county, excuse me. And so what I'd like to say is that, you know, Jennifer and her team, they work really hard, and we work well together producing a product and being able to communicate to all the departments to meet the needs of the county through both the operational and the capital budgeting. So with that, I'd like to introduce Pam Moon, the Accounting and Budget Director, is at an appointment this afternoon, so she wasn't able to be here, but Jennifer Gallegos, the manager of the Budget Office, is here, and I'd like to have her say a few words about the award.
Great, go ahead, Jennifer.
Thank you, Shirley, and thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm proud to lead the budget team and am grateful for the acknowledgement of the Commission and the Governmental Finance Officers Association. I would first like to thank my staff, Leo Ruiz, Stephanie Sanchez, Crystal Trujillo, Dana Sanchez, Ariana Espinoza, Amber Bonesteal, Carlos Sanchez, Justin Salasad, Tristan Keldorwood, and Ryan Guzman, for their hard work, working collaboratively behind the scenes with management and departments to develop a strong balanced budget for the biennial season of FY '21 and '22. Additionally, I would like to thank the Operation Excellence Team, which includes Maria Zuniga, Angela Montano, Veronica Shornak, Victoria Organic, Bexave Pacheco, and Laurel Johnson, for their work on the Strategic Management Section, which led to us receiving the Special Performance Measurement recognition for the second year in a row, as Shirley mentioned. I would also just like to close out by thanking management for their guidance, leadership, and support throughout the budget process, and I look forward to another successful budget season in FY '23 and '24. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your work. Commissioner Barboya.
I just wanted to say quickly, thank you for your work, Jennifer Gallegos, and when you shine, and thank you for naming everybody. I think it's so important that we work as a team and so strong, and it just, when you all shine, we shine, and the county gets to shine. So, thank you for your service and work.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, thank you. I love it. I love that attitude. You are so right, 100%.
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much, and congratulations. I mean, budget and accounting is such a serious business, and I appreciate how seriously you take it, what great work you do. It's so important. So, congratulations and thank you. And so if there's no other comments, we will move along to public comment and communications. Julianne, how many have signed up to speak, please?
Madam Chair, we did not have anybody sign up today.
Okay. There is no one signed up for public comment, so we will move along to approval of minutes. I will move to approve the March 9, 2021 Administrative Meeting Minutes. Do I have a second? I think I saw Commissioner Benson first, so all in favor, say aye. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Barboya.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes, I mean, aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. So, minutes are approved unanimously. We will move on to Approval of Consent Agenda. Madam Clerk, don't mute yourself, you're up next. Please provide resolution numbers for items 8A, 8H, 8I, and 8K, and ordinance number for 8M, 8N, and 8O.
Okay, ma'am. 8A is AR 2021-31. 8H is in Harry, number two, is FR 2021-32. I, number two, is FR 2021-33. K is AR 2021-34. M is ordinance number 2021-8. N is ordinance number 2021-9. And O is ordinance number 2021-10.
Okay, thank you very much. I will move to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. All in favor, say aye. Aye. And Madam Clerk, thank you for not muting yourself, please call the roll.
Commissioner Barboya.
Aye.
Commissioner Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
So called.
So that passes unanimously.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Barboya.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the committee, I'd just like to recognize two folks that I appointed to the Arts Board. I'm really excited, I've been thinking really hard and committed to trying to get good appointments, and I have Lena Ramos, who is, she's worked so much at some of our biggest institutions, and loves and is passionate about working with young people, she's, does vocal and theater, and has been a director and a producer and all the things that, and really has worked towards integrating art into education and different systems, so I'm really proud and excited to have Lena Ramos joining the Arts Board, representing District III. And I also was able to get Javier Sandoval, and he's a local Albuquerque artist, interested in centering community and prioritizing places that have been disenfranchised or disinvested in from our county. He's done everything from working on the ground and in public service and nonprofits, but also as a freelance musician, or he's been self-employed and worked for some of the bands that I love most in Albuquerque, like Cultura Fuerte, and Concepto Tembora, and many others you can see in his resume. So I just want to recognize and glad to have them on board and service to the county.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Barboya. Any other comments? Then we will move right along to approvals. 10A, District Court Employee Memorial, Tia Bland to present.
Good afternoon, everyone. Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Tia Bland. I am the Director for the County's Communication Services Department, and I also chair the Internal Naming and Memorial Committee for the, for the county. The Second Judicial District Court submitted a proposal to the Naming and Memorial Committee to, requesting to add an employee memorial plaque on one of the big flower planters that sits out in front of District Court. And what the naming committee does is to review the proposals and also solicit public comment on the proposals. I think we received one comment that was in favor of this, and the naming committee is recommending to the Board to approve this, and we do have, I think, one individual from District Court who is joining us who would like to speak about the proposal, and she is the CEO, I think, Katina Watson. So at this time, if, Katina, if you would share your comments.
Thank you, members of the Commission. On behalf of the Second Judicial District Court, we are seeking your approval. The memorial plaque acknowledges the judge. They came in their lives. Men, it's really.
Ms. Watson, volume isn't working. It's coming in and out.
Yes, if you would start over, we really missed most of what you said.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes, much better.
Okay. So, on behalf of the Second Judicial District Court, we are requesting approval, your approval for memorial, memorial plaque placement, as Ms. Bland stated, outside the front of the courthouse. The memorial plaque is college, the judges and staff that have dedicated, after many years of. We did go through the memorial naming committee, they collaborated with.
Ms. Watson, your audio is going in and out, so we are missing pretty much all of what you're, you're sharing with us this evening. I don't know if you want to close out your video, maybe that'll help your audio feed.
Is this better? Can you hear me now, clearly and consistently?
We can hear you, but as you go along, we may lose you. So if you want to try again, and then if not, we will let you know.
Okay, we'll give it one more shot. As Ms. Bland noted, we are seeking your approval for memorial, memorial plaque placement within or outside the courthouse. Like at any organization, we've had many dedicated public servants that have since passed on, and this is just to acknowledge their, their service to the public over many years. We appreciate the cooperation, collaboration. I have to give a shout out to Youngberg, Lisa Manuel, Sandy Martinez, Ed Martinez-Souttors, and Caesar Valencia, and I apologize. We went through the memorial naming committee, went through the process.
Okay, Ms. Watson, we are losing your feed again. It might be a setting that automatically adjusts your audio because you are, you do continue to go in and out. You can call in if you prefer. And Madam Chair, I'll defer to you on how you want to proceed.
Okay. Do you want to try calling in, Ms. Watson? It seems like we've lost her. Tia, why don't you, why don't you continue on then? Oh. I'm sorry, I see Ms. Watson, are you still in the meeting? No, I'm sorry, we can't hear you. County Manager.
Hi, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Katina, I'm sorry, we can't hear you, but I think what we did here is you're just acknowledging some past judges and employees, correct, who have passed away and worked for the Second Judicial District Court, and you wanted to display this plaque to acknowledge them. Is that correct? I just wanted to make sure. Anyway, I just felt like I wanted to speak about that just a little bit, since I worked there for a long time, for 17 years, and so they are very, very good people, and a lot of, I knew a lot of really great judges and individuals who did pass away, but they left a wonderful legacy. So, thank you very much, Madam Chair and Commissioners. And Katina, if you wanted to call in, we can keep going, and if you want to call in at the end of the meeting, you're welcome to do that, if that's okay with Madam Chair.
Yeah. Do you know what you'd like to do right now, Ms. Watson, or? Okay, well, we'll just go on then. Go ahead, Tia.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I just wanted to add one more point. I don't, I don't know if you all heard Ms. Watson say this, or whether or not she said it. There is no cost to the county, the court has taken on the cost of purchasing the plaque.
Okay, and it looks like Ms. Watson wants to call in, so when, Julianne, when we get that call, we can put her through.
I'll do.
Are you trying right now? Do you want to give us a thumbs up if you're trying to call in right now? Okay. So Julianne, she should be in in just a few seconds, hopefully.
I'm not seeing her call come through, so just give me a second.
Okay.
Fresh here.
Okay. Tia, can you read what the plaque says?
Oh, boy. I don't have it in front of me. Does anyone? There was a quote, Margaret Mead quote, and then there's a separate comment.
I have it, if you want me to read it.
Awesome. Would you, would you please, Commissioner Barboya?
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the committee, the proposed language on the plaque is, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has." Margaret Mead. "In memory of all the thoughtful, committed Second Judicial District Court employees that have served our community, may you rest in peace."
Thank you. Okay. Do we have Ms. Watson yet?
I still have not seen her number come through. Ms. Watson, I just sent you a chat, if you could respond.
I, I think at this point, how about if we go ahead and vote on that item, and then when, if Ms. Watson can make it into the meeting, we can put her through. So do I, oh, are you here?
I finally made it in.
Oh, there you go.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you all, thank you, members of the Commission. Yeah, on behalf of the Second Judicial District Court.
I'm having a hard time hearing you on the phone now.
How about I type in a couple of comments?
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay. So, do we have a motion to approve the placement of the plaque to honor deceased Second Judicial District Court employees? Commissioner Benson moves. Do I have a second? I see Commissioner Casada, so all in favor, say aye. Okay. And Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Barboya.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye.
So called.
Okay, and so, let's just check the chat as Ms. Watson types in, and then we'll just, for now, move on to the next item. So. This is from our legal department, the Community Workforce Agreement Amendments, Ken Martinez and Elias Archuleta to present.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll kind of start off and then hand it over to Elias. We're, continue to work on a community workforce agreement. I think we're probably the first government in the state of New Mexico to adopt one, and it's a good thing. The federal government is part of the funding for this next project, and Elias, being in front of everything, sent it to them for their comments and to review. They sent us back information that the federal government now is in favor of workforce agreements. They refer to them as project labor agreements, PLA's, but they haven't finished their process for the approvals. I think the process will take about six months at least, and Elias is worried about the funding stream on this current project. But in the meantime, set that aside for Elias, we did route the existing community workforce agreement to the trade unions representatives, and they read it very carefully, and they had some suggested amendments, and really a pleasant thing is that their amendments were in favor of the county and kind of management rights. The two amendments really are, one, to remove a paragraph that does with union security or basically saying the job site should be union members only. That doesn't need to be in there, kind of as a policing, because it'll be all in the procurement, it'll be in the procurement process. So they suggested we just take it out, so we don't need it, so people don't feel in any way offended by that. And two is, they also suggested there was a provision for parties to get out of the agreement midterm, like with written notice, and they suggested that the only party that should be able to get out of the agreement would be the county for their own purposes, because the trade unions aren't going to ask to leave an agreement once they start a project, and they don't want any of the contractors, subcontractors, to try to leave an existing contract in the middle of a construction project. So we tightened that language up, working with Annabelle from my office and Danny Garrett. So those are really the two amendments. So you will have really a super updated community workforce agreement upon adoption of these amendments, so as it's presented to you. Our next plan is to send that to the trade unions who are available and ready to sign. In fact, they would have signed it, I said we have to wait till you guys adopt the amendments that I just listed out, and then we're going to send it for them to sign. The meantime, Elias has made a very robust plan to get it to the feds, and I don't want to steal any of his thunder, but he's even worked out a peer-to-peer exchange on it, so that we'll be kind of pushing the envelope, getting the feds to start approving these, and if I may, I'd like to defer to Elias for the rest of that.
Go ahead, Elias.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, as Ken said, we're coming out in front of this, not only on the this, not only on the state level, but it turns out on the national level. So we reached out through New Mexico DOT, who are the stewards of the federal program here in the state, and they informed us that the PLA's were approved under an executive order under the Obama administration, but back at the time, there were no governments, either state DOTs or local entities, that were interested in pursuing them. So they didn't propagate any rules or guidance regarding the use of them. So along with an announcement that came along with the infra grant solicitation back in early February, late January, they included language that encouraged the use of project labor agreements. So upon that, we jumped on that opportunity and said, hey, we have a project ready to go. We've been working on agreements, can we go ahead and use it? From there is when they came back and reminded us that, you know, with standard federal projects, you can't proceed without their complete blessing. But with that, they said that they are launching into that process now, and invited us to join in on at least one, if not a couple, peer exchanges that will be participating in with Washington State, Oregon State, New York, and Illinois, along with New Mexico, and the Burnaleo County is now part of that team, where we will take the agreements that you, that with the amendments you're approving tonight, and that'll be our example, walking in, that we can actually run through this process and probably simultaneously, along with them, creating the processes. We just may end up walking out of there with our agreement being one of the first in the nation to be approved. But with that, like we said, that's going to take probably anywhere, anywhere from six months to nine months to complete the entire process, including the approval of our agreement. So that puts us kind of behind the ball on the Sunport project, which will formally be bringing to you next meeting to request your determination on whether to go or no go with the CWA on it. But with that, our funding was approved back in September on that project. We got the go-ahead to advertise our project late January, when we secured the last of the necessary right-of-way easements. So we actually have to submit an invoice on the construction work within a year of the obligation of those funds. But we need to advertise that project no later than the end of April, to ensure that we have a contractor in place, and we'll get a payment submitted by September of 2021. So we're going to respectfully, at the next meeting, ask that we do not apply the CWA on the Sunport project. However, as many of you know, with the guidance for the usage of the CWA, our projects need to be $7 million or more with regard to horizontal projects, which are the roadway work. The only projects that we have that'll exceed that amount are federal projects. So we want to make sure and get the federal authorization to utilize a CWA so that we can use these on our road projects. So that's the reason we are still, you know, asking you to approve tonight, even though we won't be able to use it on Sunport. I stand for questions.
Okay. Are there any questions? Okay, Commissioner Barboah.
I just for my clarity, so does this threaten the, it sounds like this may threaten the actual completion of the Sunport development. I know we got a notice today about some other opportunities, but.
Um.
Sorry, Madam Commissioner and.
Oh, yeah. Madam Chair, Commissioner Barboah. If we were to, if we were to, if we were to try to use it, if we were to try to use the CWA as it stands now on the Sunport project, it would jeopardize it. So that's why we're going to be asking to not apply it. So by not applying the CWA, we can go forward with Sunport, not risking any of the, you know, any of the funding or any participation.
Okay. That's more clear. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ken Martinez.
And Madam Chair, we've had, I think, just the highest level of cooperation with the trade unions on this, and they have said clearly that they don't want to hold up any projects. So they're in agreement that if the paperwork won't be ready, so to speak, from the federal level, that they would wait for the next one for it to apply. So it's not an item of controversy. Everybody seemed to agree on that. It's just us helping the feds move forward.
Okay, it seems to me like, from my reading of this, that it's cleaning up some language in there, some editorial fixes, and also bringing this into alignment with federal requirements. Is that pretty?
That's perfect, perfectly said.
Thank you. Okay, so if there's no more questions, is there a motion to approve the amendments to the Community Workforce Agreement? Commissioner Casada moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner O'Malley, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Barboah.
Aye.
Mr. Benson.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Casada.
Aye.
Madam Chair Piscotti.
Aye. And thank you very much. That passes unanimously. And now, I know you guys are all ready to get out of here, but I have one discussion item. We've gotten a lot of questions about the American Rescue Plan, so I just want to briefly address what is going on with that. And the American Rescue Plan was signed by President Biden on March 12, 2021, and it grants $362 billion to help states, territories, counties, et cetera, cover increased expenditures, replenish lost revenue, and mitigate economic harm from the COVID-19 pandemic. And so how that applies to Burnaleo County is that Burnaleo County is anticipated to receive approximately $132 million in American Rescue Plan funding, and 50% of that will be, will come to us within 60 days of March 12, and the rest of it, the balance, the other 50%, will come in April or May of next year, 2022. The deadline to spend those funds is December 31, 2024. Some of the allowed uses of the funds are to respond to or mitigate the COVID-19 public health emergency with respect to negative economic impacts. So for example, assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality. Also allowed, provide government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue such as online property or income taxes due to the public health emergency, to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure, and also providing premium pay to eligible workers of the county that are performing essential work. And so I just wanted to bring this up, because there have been questions, and there's going to be a lot of questions. $132 million is a lot of money, even if you split it 50, in 50%. So I just wanted to give a good shout out to County Manager Julie Shirley Reagan, who they've been researching this and analyzing just what we can spend this on, what the constraints are, what we can't spend it on, and just some of the, just kind of the technical details around this money. And so County Manager Julie, would you like to add anything to that about the next steps, and maybe a little bit about where we are right now? And at this point, we know a little bit, but there's more questions than answers, so there's a lot more unknown. So do you want to just kind of talk about where we're going next, and answer the number one question, probably, when can we expect to get this round of money?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, so just like, kind of like the CARES Fund, things, right now, things are kind of up in the air. So we're waiting for some direction from the Department of the Treasury Department. And so what's happening is they're probably going to make a few issuances of rules still, followed by some amendments and clarifications. So we're kind of waiting for that to happen, but we want to assure you all that we're being very proactive, and we're identifying possibilities and getting ready to execute this grant, this amazing opportunity that we've been given. So just know that, I think one of the things that we're really looking at is, let's finish a lot of the things that we've started, the projects that we've already started, that we need to kind of finish up and move on, so that we can begin, you know, other initiatives. But of course, as long as it's applicable to the policies and that are going to be laid out for us by the Department of Treasury. So like, I believe Shirley was saying that we should be getting half of the funding a month from the time that President Biden signed, correct, Shirley? I believe so. So it's in April, in mid-April. So we're, we should be getting 50% of that $132 million, the middle part of April. And we'll be reaching out to you all. We've been, we've been getting lots of requests and ideas, which we love, and just rest assured that we will be transparent, that, you know, we are listening to the public, we are listening to anybody that, lots of people are very, very interested in, you know, how they can apply for the funds. And I can assure you, just like with the CARES funding, a lot of the money is going to go right straight out to the community, and that's, you know, doing the right thing. So, and I want to commend the staff for all the work they did on the CARES funding. Thank you, Madam Chair, and I stand for any questions. And Shirley's here as well.
Shirley, did you have anything to add?
Um. Just that, you know, once we, what we're, like you said, we're waiting on the U.S. Department of Treasury from the federal government to give us instructions. We have to certify, I believe, this time, because there is the opportunity to allocate some of the funding to lost revenue. We might have to supply some additional information, and we'll then have to supply the banking information. One of the things we don't know is how they're going to split the funds out, or between the different categories, or if we will be allowed to do that ourselves. And like Julie said, with the, as with the CARES funding, and even with the emergency rental assistance that we just received, the $5 million, the guidance trickles in. So the government financial officers, NACO, we're all been putting together questions, and because the U.S. Department of Treasury Office of the Inspector General has asked, what can we do better this time with these funds than what we did with the CARES funds? So we talked about timely guidance, more guidance upfront, so that we can better apply the funds and not have to make adjustments as we go along. They're expecting similar type reporting. So there's a lot of information and things that are still outstanding, as Commissioner Piscotti and County Manager said, but we're ready. We have more money this time. I want to point out, it is one-time funding, just like CARES, so there is the opportunity to do the capital. I like that they placed emphasis on water and sewer and broadband infrastructure, because it'll allow us to look at what we have, and like County Manager said, you know, look at those projects that we are lacking funding on to complete, and let's take those to completion. And then, you know, look at everything else. But we'll be ready to report and provide information as it becomes available. It's a 300 and, no, 600 and some page bill, so it was, it took a lot of analysis, but thankful for our federal lobbyist, John O'Donnell, and his folks, been helping work through a lot of that detail as well. So thanks for the opportunity to provide a little bit of input. Thank you.
Thanks, Shirley. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much. And I know we're going to do some great things with that money, and we're going to do it right the first time. We want to research it first and see what the rules are. So I appreciate all your work on that, and we're going to be doing some good things, good things for our community in our county. And so if there's, oh, Commissioner Benson.
Madam Chair, Ms. Katina Watson wrote in some comments. I don't know if they should be read.
Oh. Okay. And. Okay, so from CEO Katina Watson, "We appreciate your consideration of this request and want to acknowledge all of our dedicated judges and staff that have passed on. We appreciate all the assistance and cooperation from the county. Again, thank you." Thank you, Commissioner Benson, for bringing that to my attention. Is there anything else for this evening? If not, then I will tell you when the next meetings are. Tuesday, March 30, 2021, budget hearings, starting at 9:00 a.m. via Zoom. Tuesday, April 6, 2021, zoning meeting, 3:00 p.m. by Zoom. And Tuesday, April 6, it's a doubleheader administrative meeting at 5:00 p.m. by Zoom. And so if there is no other business, I actually have a gavel tonight. I'm going to bang the gavel and adjourn the meeting. Have a good night, everybody.